So I'm gonna call the special... I'm gonna call a special meeting of the Board of Alderman to order at 7:00 PM, Tuesday, January 28th, here in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering and Alderman Lou will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the rule?
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderman Cleef.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Dowd. Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Tenza.
President.
Alderwoman Lou.
Here.
Alderman Jettie. Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Laws.
Here.
Alderman Cleaver.
Here.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
President.
Alderman Willscher.
Here.
We have 12 in attendance.
Thank you. Alderman Dowd and Alderman Jettie will not be joining us this evening. And I haven't heard from Alderman Clemmons, I expect he'll be here. Communications.
Communication's been received from Lori Willscher, President of the Board of Alderman, regarding special Board of Alderman meeting.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. I did want to note also that the mayor is here this evening in Corporation Council. Steve Bolton is here this evening. Presentation. Mr. Nelson. Feel free to come and is there some place they're gonna sit? Good evening.
Is this your PowerPoint?
Yes, so we'd love to show the video first.
Okay.
As a way to condense time. It's a long-ish video, seven or eight minutes, but it is gonna save us time on talking about Building on Hope and all the things that they have done. And then we'd love to open up and talk about what the impact of PAL and the impact of Nashua this project's gonna be. So if we could...
We do have a couple of empty seats, Alderman Jetties and Alderman Dowds.
That's scary.
Oh, don't be afraid.
Can I just give you a little context before they play the video?
Sure.
My name's Jonathan Hawley, I'm an architect from Concord and I co-chair a group called Building on Hope. We are not an incorporated 501(c) or anything like that. We are truly a bond-raising group of New Hampshire residents that for the last 12 years have raised more than $5 million, have done five projects, completed five projects in Amherst, Manchester, Concord. And what we do essentially is we come and do an extreme makeover of a not-for-profit. We went through an application process about nine months ago and chose Nashua PAL for their mission, for their impact, and for the fact that they have great programs but had a capital facility that was in need of renovation. So what we plan to do is come in for 10 days in May and completely renovate this building. We expect to raise over $800,000. I can tell you that we bought an elevator today. I have a contractor that has committed to build the shaft on the outside of the building that I haven't even told Sean, that construction's gonna start in about a month. So there's some things that happen, you know, ahead of time. We will muster probably 100 different general contractors. I have a personal relationship with just about every contractor in the state, so they cringe when I call.
I bet.
But I have every contractor that you can imagine, a commercial contractor, will donate a couple of people for a couple of days over a 10-day period. And we literally put about 200 people on-site a day for 10 days. We partner with an interior designer. In this particular case, we have 15 interior designers, each one own a room. And they own designing the room, they own putting a team together, they come in and build it, we completely furnish it. So, that all being said, you're gonna see the context of what we do in the video, which I think is great. I'm just gonna throw it out there, because that's what I usually do. We're here to ask the board tonight for some help. We would like, because everything is done pro bono, I'm asking lumberyards for free donations, I'm asking for, I'm asking across the board. I have been working with Mark Collins here, your building inspector, in terms of coordinating what we're doing here, so that he understands that this is organized chaos. But we've done a set of plans, so he knows that it's being done right. But we're looking to ask this board to waive permit fees. And we're asking the board to help us manage the street in front of this building. We would like to close it down at least during the day, eight hours a day, to allow... I need parking for about 50 vehicles that will be a flood on this building every day. And part of my conundrum is, you know, I get these businesses that say, "I'm gonna donate, I'm gonna send, you know, three trucks and six guys," but they drive around the block and they get frustrated and they go home. I need a place to park it, and what we'd like to do is close down the street, leave it accessible so a fire truck could come through, but manage it in a way where there's not through traffic, that I can double-park cars. We have a number of tractor-trailers that we're gonna park in the park across the street to store materials ahead of time. But I need some help, because it's an urban site, there's no place to do any sort of lay-down. And that's, and I know Sean has some other things to talk about as well, but we can watch the video and that'll give you a good idea of what we expect to do here in May.
Thank you. Do you wanna...
Hit play?
Double-click that? Just throw something at it.
So Rick, everyone always asks us, like, okay, how did Building on Hope start? And, you know, we can't come up with this 20-minute, you know...
Or a five-minute.
Yeah, so let's try to tell people, how did, you know, how we came up with this idea?
Yeah. We were bored.
We were not bored!
We were a little bored.
I was not bored, maybe you were bored, but I was not. We came up with the idea at the social fundraiser.
Yeah.
For, it was for the Palace Theater.
Yeah.
Me, you, and EJ were talking.
Right.
The economy was not that good at the time, we were talking about the construction industry.
Yeah.
And we said, and you had mentioned that, we were talking about the home, extreme home makeover, how it really wasn't that successful, right?
Well, we just knew that people were not always pleased when it was done, and it also seemed like a great idea in that extreme makeover concept, but we needed to make it to where, at the end, everybody felt good.
Right.
And that's pretty much when Jonathan Hawley came to mind, because he was one of the people who was involved with the last extreme makeover project. He was one of the signatories, one of the people whose name wound up on television.
Right.
And he knew that a lot of his coworkers were disappointed that they hadn't gotten that. And that also, in the end, all that came of it was one family got a great gift. And so he really responded to this idea of, what if we could make a lot of people, we could benefit a lot of people with an act like that. It gives the opportunity for the kids to flourish in better ways and give them more independent living skills, and just more of a peaceful atmosphere to live in. It just gives them that more of a home-like feel. And we can work more one-on-one with them in a nice facility here now that Building on Hope revamped this 10 years ago. Most things are still intact, like even the coffee table's still intact with all the quotes on it. The paint's still, all is the same colors, a little touch-ups every now and again, but yeah, like everything is intact, the kitchen's looking great. We do a good job trying to keep up with everything that Building on Hope did for us.
When I first wished for something from them, I wished for a porch, and I got air-conditioning and new floors and new furniture and beautiful walls. And the night before we did our reveal, Jonathan was here with us until midnight, hanging the beautiful signs and signs on all the walls. And there's nothing better than when the girls broke through the door and saw this beautiful space. In the 23 years I've been at Girls Inc., it's one of the most memorable days of my life. And I wanna thank Building on Hope for the amazing work they do for all the charities in the community.
It's made incredible differences in our world here. We've been fortunate that we've had the experience of tripling the size of our operation. We are so grateful and indebted to the Building on Hope project and all it stands for and everything it's done. It's had a major impact on our community. And all the hard work certainly has made a major, major difference in the lives of the people that we support that live with disabilities. So we are so grateful and appreciate everything you've done.
When we did the reveal, there was a gentleman who didn't speak very well, but he had, he had a, he had the alphabet. And it was in a, it was in a plastic sleeve. But this kid came in and he had tears in his eyes and he was looking around, and the only way he could communicate was pointing to letters. And he just, he looked at me, and he's frantically pointing at the letters, and it spelled out, "I love Rocky." And everybody there just was in tears, and it's just a beautiful, beautiful moment. So to be able to give your time and efforts to something so amazing is truly a blessing.
We just have so much more to offer in the inner-city of Manchester. This is a center, center of the city, a lot of kids have to walk here. This just gives them a safe haven after school hours. And the Building on Hope really just gave these kids some of the best equipment, a safer building, just a place where these kids come and they feel safe. The reveal was absolutely amazing here at the Manchester Police Athletic League. When I came in here, it was shocking, almost like you were in a dream. And words really can't describe how impactful the remodel this building was and just how much was actually done in that amount of time.
It's been a game-changer for us. We doubled the capacity at our domestic and sexual violence shelter here in Merrimack County, serving twice the number of victims that we were able to serve before. I can't thank enough the coordination of the board and the volunteers of Building on Hope. It really is a project that I've never experienced anything of that magnitude before. The amount of logistics and coordination that went into totally making over from the outside shingles into the inside plumbing and heating of our shelter here in Merrimack County was truly awe-inspiring.
We were still planning and dreaming, but that process alone has been so fun in terms of dreaming about what this building can be, what can we bring to the kids, to the youth in a meaningful way. So I want storage and new paint, but that's not big enough. We gotta dream about what do we want our teenagers to want and need. That process has been already pretty empowering, pretty exciting for a team.
The magic is that it actually happens and that you can't predict how it will or with who, but people just show up. It's this blind faith that it just will happen. And my favorite part is these totally unknown people who just show up out of nowhere and stay for as long as they're needed and finish the project with you and then disappear. And hopefully in two years, you see them again.
I've met the most awesome, generous people, and to be around people like that in a project of this magnitude is really, really nice. As tired as you get, at the end of the day, you feel good about everything that you did. And when you're around people like that all the time, it makes it much easier and worthwhile.
How do we sum up 10 years? 10 years of, I think, doing amazing things that clearly I didn't envision when we first started. I think this has turned out to be something absolutely amazing about the people of New Hampshire.
Think about all the people we've impacted, the clients of these nonprofits, the staff. We've brought on some new board members for some of the nonprofits. It's been more than just a physical renovation. It's also been helping nonprofits do business better.
That's true. We left, I think we've left a staff person, a Building on Hope person, at every project that we've been involved with to date.
People have been, they've gotten so much out of it. Everyone says they get more out of it than they put into it.
Absolutely. Many hands make for light work. And I think, I do think that it's a true testament to the people in New Hampshire, the communities that we've impacted, the contractors that have all stepped up and continue to come back, which is absolutely amazing. And it's not just the contractors, it's, you walk in off the street and it's just one person and you're there for a day, you make a huge impact, just like somebody that might provide something more than that. I think that the biggest thing that you and I and the Building on Hope Committee and the whole community wanna say to the folks sitting here and watching this video or seeing it for the first time is that we're very grateful for, you know, everybody who steps up and makes an impact. We're grateful, we're very happy, and we look forward to the next project.
And the next project's in Nashua. So Jonathan sort of left the cat in the bag. We're essentially looking for some help in the world of the fees to make some of these things happen. As Jonathan described, there are hundreds of volunteers who have already committed to this project. And PAL has major plans already, putting the plans to motion on what we're gonna do once the renovation is complete. We are gonna have a state-of-the-art facility in the toughest area of our city, and we're looking forward to what we're gonna do with that with our kids. And to be, I've been with PAL for 12 years, and this is something that we've dreamed about and talked about, and to see it actually coming to reality. We essentially are gonna get a building that's worth a million bucks, and we're gonna maybe raise $100,000. And like Jonathan said, we're adding an elevator to solve accessibility issues. We are talking about state-of-the-art education, computers, robots, all the things that, beyond our dreams, is what the center's gonna be. We're gonna transform the, our plan is to transform the tree streets from the inside out, essentially, after this project is done. And for the folks that don't know, I apologize, missed the introduction, I am Sean Nelson from Nashua PAL. Been working with PAL for about a dozen years now, and PAL has gotten stronger over the 30 years that we've been here in Nashua, and this is quite an opportunity. So essentially, we'd like to open it up to questions, see what people have. Hopefully, the video has solved some of the resistance that folks have, this concept of how the heck does this work? The Building on Hope folks have proven that it works. And we will be bringing this energy to Nashua, hopefully for the first of many times. But lucky that Nashua PAL is the champion for this first go-around.
Some amazing work they've done, so I'm looking forward to seeing what they're gonna do for the PAL building. It's great. Questions? Alderman Lopez.
You guys gonna be adding a kitchen?
Yes, sir.
It's an ongoing issue. Kids in the low-income neighborhoods need to learn how to cook New Hampshire's food and can't have a stove.
Yes, we've been with Heidi Peak and will be considering teaching kitchens, so we're crossing off all the possible barriers that will exist in this project. Because as Jonathan described, it's a lot of volunteers doing these projects, so it makes sense for us to get ahead of the curve. We've talked to Nick Cagiano about getting creative in some of our parks that are in that area during that short window of time. We've tried to eliminate all the barriers that would exist, and, you know, keep the questions coming, I'm excited.
Anyone else? Questions? Alderman Laws.
First of all, I'm gushing about, this is wonderful. Sean, you deserve it, you're a great dude, known you for most of my life. And this is fantastic, and thank you so much for doing things like this. Makes me so happy to hear. That being said, how long is the project gonna take? You said that earlier, I believe, but I missed it.
The project is actually gonna start quietly, probably in mid-March. In that, there are long lead items, like the elevator. Like the elevator that was ordered today. We have a contractor that's gonna come in and do the excavation, put a foundation in, set the foundations for the porch that will go on the front of the building. The elevator will probably start mid-April. The build occurs in nine or 10 days and finishes right about May 16th, Mother's Day. So we have, we'll have a formal groundbreaking, but we will have already broken ground. And we'll invite everybody in this room to participate and to stay for the week. That's the honest-to-God truth. So, and then we wrap up, and we typically have a party on the Sunday right around Mother's Day. They will have a band, they will have food. We feed all the contractors two meals a day. And when we did MPAL, we fed the neighborhood for the time that we were there, because kids were coming out of the 10-minute blocks not having supper. It was, you'd cry. I mean, it was, it was, it was just an extremely emotional thing. This is gonna be transformational for them. I just wanna share a couple, just a couple of quick things just to set the stage. When we did the Crisis Center in Concord last year, they were chosen, but we made it conditional. And so they asked us to come in and renovate the shelter. And when we were doing the interview, they shared with us their 10-year vision. And I'm gonna cry. What we said to them is, "Make your 10-year vision a 10-month vision, and we'll do it." Out of that process, a doctor from Concord Hospital stepped up and bought them a $300,000 building down the street. They now had an administrative office building and cleared the shelter. They now serve over 25 people in the shelter where they were serving maybe eight. Yesterday, I had a conversation with the executive director, they've gone from a staff of six, they're gonna go to a staff of 20. Their programs, the fact that they have the infrastructure to support their mission, which is not all about a shelter, there's a lot of outreach, they're in the schools, they're in the, you know, they're talking about women and children and abuse and all those kinds of things. They're gonna go to 20 people. Their panic now is to renovate the third floor of the building that was given to them to accommodate that staff. That's what's gonna happen here at MPAL. When we did Manchester Police Athletic League, it was a crazy scope. It was over $1 million. And quite honestly, three months in, we were all questioning, "How are we gonna do this?" We had a contractor walk in on a Friday morning and literally said, "I'll take care of it all," mechanically. He put three guys on-site for four months, and he donated $400,000 and put an entire system in the building. That will happen here, that's already happening here. I mean, I can tell you that, name a contractor, they're involved. There'll be, there's a lot of people that, and it's a way for the construction community, the design community to come together, to meet each other. I've gotten work out of it. I mean, I still have to earn a living, but I do a lot of this, and it's not to earn a living, but to pay it forward. And what's gonna happen at MPAL is just gonna be transformational, it's gonna be something totally different. My challenge is now is to make that happen, is to get that done. And we would like this board to consider, and I know it's a difficult thing to do, but to perhaps waive the building permit fees, or if we pay the fees, they somehow come back to the project? And we would like to, ooh.
Mayor?
I mean, I think all we need is a resolution passed by the Board of Alderman, and we can waive the fees, I believe. We need to check with our legal counsel, but I think it's within the discretion of the Board of Alderman, so. It's a great project, so we're not really looking to get money out of the fees on this, so I don't think that'll be a big problem.
Fantastic.
Off the street, you may need the Board of Public Works.
Yeah, the street closing, so you wanna close Ash Street for, during the day, for a period of time?
We've already had a preliminary conversation with Public Works, the fire department, the police department, for sure, they're in the building all the time. So I think that there's some things that we can put in place and we can manage it. We don't intend to close it down for two weeks, we'll maintain access through and... So that's the second request, to somehow manage that.
Well, that we can work on, I'm sure we can work something out there as well.
Was there anything else? Should've come with a bigger list.
Yeah, it's great.
So the last piece is just to spread the word. We're at a point now where we're getting to the project, it's gonna happen in May. So we're essentially, we're moving, we're moving our membership essentially mid-April over to the gymnasium and over to Crossway Christian Church and a few other places to make sure that our programs continue throughout this process, and then we're gonna take over the world after that.
I do have one more question.
Yes, sir.
So you were, of course, very instrumental in the Your Voice, Your Choice project, which resulted in the Futsal Court last year?
Yep.
Are you gonna be open this year? Is your building gonna be open so that we can, again, use PAL to kind of, as the center of that project this year? Or do you think that you'll be too much...
After May 17th, we can do whatever we want, back to operations.
And before that, maybe not?
From April 6th to May 17th, it'll be difficult to use the center for community meetings.
Okay.
But as you know, we've got strategies to make things happen, so we can...
All right, so we'll start working on that. All right, thank you.
Alderman Gathright.
You spoke of the 10 days in May, I believe, as asking to close down. Is that a full-day close-down, or are you just speaking during the day? Because the church is there, and there's three meetings a week.
We would not in any way hold up anybody needing to get into the buildings that surround us. We're just looking for cross-traffic, because a lot of traffic does cut through, to sort of mitigate that. I'm talking maybe 7:30 to 7:30, and allowing residents to come in and get to their homes and churchgoers to go to the church and those kinds of things. But to ask them during that period that they might, unless they have parking on the property that they're in, not to park in the road where we are. What I don't wanna have happen is a contractor backing into somebody's car, or, you know, those kinds of things that happen when somebody's done for the day and they just wanna go home. So 7:30 to 7:30?
I believe you have a meeting scheduled with the church, with the trustees, or someone does?
Yes, I don't know if it's set yet, but yes, it's coming.
Yeah, I think it's the 11th or the 12th of the month, I believe, February. I think.
Yeah, wait.
I was told that. Okay.
Anyone else? Looks like Ty Pennington has met his match. Congrats, that's a really awesome project, and we wish you the best. And we'll do what we can to work with you and make this happen.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you very much.